We got the Worthington store there.
Oh, we have that.
Instant mashed potatoes.
We have it over rice. I don't like potatoes.
Hi, you're all back. We're gonna deal with the town of Worthington. Come on up.
Welcome.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks, guys.
I'm in, Paulie.
Mike Phelan. What are you doing?
Hi.
Oh, we only have one down.
Oh, okay.
How you doing, Mike Phelan?
Have your seats in front. I received your letter in regards to leaving Gateway and entertaining the idea of looking for administrative support and temporary classroom facilities for a while. Will you explain to us?
At this part, we're not gonna actually ask you for support. This is kind of a courtesy business to be able to explain to you what is we're doing.
Okay.
Give you a little sense about how you might be impacted by a positive one.
Mm-hmm.
And then maybe answer any questions that you might have. In essence, we are pursuing leaving the Gateway Regional School. There's been discussions with the higher school district, so we're setting the school committee in regard to paying per tuition.
Let's get that close. Not that we're gonna exclude the public, but so we can hear you, right?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, we got that much.
Paying per tuition fee. It has to have our seven through twelve program in your system, which would help fill your empty seats more than what the school choice arrangement would be. And doesn't disrupt your current governance. So, we're not asking to essentially join the district. We're in essence asking to have a contractual relationship.
On a year-to-year basis, or are you talking multi-year?
For us, it would be offended. At half-burden.
Right. It would be ninety-nine year agreement. It would be something like renegotiation if prices go up.
No, um...
If your community turns over and you have a few empty seats, you know what I mean?
Okay. So, unlike a school of choice where once you're in the system, you're there until the end of the system.
Right. This is a situation...
You're coming in as a block.
Right. So, what the agreement would allow would be, it would guarantee a spot for all the Worthington children in the seventh through twelfth period in Hampshire. Otherwise, unlike school of choice where there can be years when there are no spots integrated for school of choice.
But it'll be at a higher rate.
But you're talking seven through twelve. What about the elementary school?
The elementary school, we're gonna create our own K through six district. So, we'll be taking care of that in town.
So, the kids will stay there. So, there'll be no effect on our...
K six.
K six elementary school here in town.
Right.
The only thing you're talking about is our...
Seven through twelve.
Seven through twelve, which we're a part of a regional anyway.
Right.
So, we're not the ultimate decider of those facts. I've seen some communications going back and forth between you and Dr. Jurgensen.
Right.
And it seems like that situation out there is positive, I guess, from the sounds of it.
We met with the school committee a couple of weeks ago. They bought into it. They did send in a letter to the state Joint Committee on Education endorsing the plan, saying that they have the capacity and it would work.
So, on the local level, what are you looking for or for from us?
Well, it's interesting to let you know. And also too, if...
When is he in time table on this? I forget.
We will, the public hearing on, right now, we have a home rule petition in front of the legislature and the, for the Joint Committee on Education is going to be on September nineteenth.
But you don't anticipate bringing this down into the Hampshire regional system in this September, right?
Yeah.
You're talking a year from now, at the earliest.
We'll, I know, as, Select Board in the town pays the highest percentage of the regional right now. And we paid a lot of extra money in this past year that we weren't anticipating. We, we probably wanna know what the impact's gonna be for us. You know, we do have a percentage. I don't know if our percentage was fifty-four, fifty-five percent. You know, I mean, ideally, I can't personally say I'd be in favor if our percentage goes up. I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen. I'm just saying I wanna know the financial impacts because it's very difficult for solving them to pass an override, number two. And if it was an override where we had control, we do diligence, and it would be our heads. And my feeling is, I would like to, before there's anything on my part, I'd like to know what the financial impacts are gonna be over, say, a three-year projection.
Well, I can tell you in general, I'm both a current member of the Select Board in Worthington, but I'm also a former chair of the Gateway Regional School District Committee. And Worthington pay is a standard of effort. It was one of the five highest towns in the state.
It was the highest for corporations.
So, we have familiarity with having a disproportionate burden with regard to financing education in the town. But in this case, in essence, because we're paying a higher tuition fee than we did from school of choice, the impact on your town, it won't affect your percentages, but it should affect the amount of money from the school district budget that needs to be raised and appropriated for the town. That's where you should actually find some relief with regard to having our kids in the district.
Right. And if we have vacant seats up there, we're paying a portion of those vacant seats for the building and the system. If they fill those vacancies and pay a tuition for them, as long as they contribute, pay the variable cost and anything towards the fixed cost, technically, we should see smaller demands on us.
You should see some relief. And one of the things I think we could find out a little bit about is to know where your tipping points are. So, in other words, two or three of our children going in with a class that currently has like eleven students and it doesn't require any more teaching, for example, it's just actually having ten more kids in the classroom to help pay for the budget.
Have you talked to them about, it's always been an issue here with us, I mean, having special needs.
Yeah, that was ninety-eight point. Special education would be the...
A hardship to deal with the times.
That'll be on you. Outside placements, special placements.
That's one of my concerns as a Select Board member because, you know, I've seen placements that run a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Couple of hundred thousand dollars. We have a couple of them already.
Yeah. All of the Harper.
Yeah. I know it was three or four years ago, we were sending kids to Smith-Volk and they could go into Westfield for a lot less. And we had to be a little creative, but we ended up finding a way to transport them and save money.
We had to deal with it. Smith-Volk ourselves still.
Yeah. What about your vocational students? Where would they...
That would remain our responsibility.
Yeah, our responsibility. Where do you send...
Mostly at Smith. Occasionally, I have students go to Westfield.
So, but you take care of the transportation and all that?
Yeah, it's all ourselves. We contract for that ourselves now. If that student wants to go to Westfield, it's a late arrival. We don't currently have a bus contract to get to Westfield, so we deal with that, you know.
You find it cheaper to buy them a car and do them?
Yeah. But also with plus superintendent's and also incorporate the plus costs that we pay for...
That's all your...
All in the plan.
I mean, I think I agree with you. We don't wanna see our percentage increase, but I'm hoping that this would, should technically decrease our, because if they pay them...
Maybe not the percent.
No.
It won't go up.
Yeah. As long as they're paying the variable cost and something towards the fixed cost, we're coming out ahead.
Right. So, Hampshire over the last ten years has lost about a hundred students in seven through twelve.
How many students are you talking about?
We're talking about fifty to seventy on a local basis.
Five to seven kids a class or something like that.
So, they should have the capacity, whether it's in the specific location you need it, would be the question.
We have forty-six kids in Gateway this past spring in seven through twelve.
Are they going to Gateway? This coming year?
We believe some of them, we're gonna have to offer some options for continuity. For some of the kids, you know, we don't wanna be telling parents they have to take their senior out of school that they've been in for the last eleven years with their schooling. So, we expect that for some period of time, we'll have some students who'll continue to go to Gateway. That's what we have to do. But we have ten kids going to Hampshire now.
Yeah. This is about twenty percent of our...
Under school of choice?
Right.
Well, that brings up an interesting question. There, you're paying school of choice price. You're talking about paying a higher percentage for the other students. We're gonna be, are we gonna flip those into the higher percentage, or are they gonna stay in as school of choice?
I think that, yeah, superintendent, you know, we're working, we're gonna...
Because once they're in under school of choice, they get to stay.
Right, right.
I mean, I'm not opposed to it, but I wanna see the numbers before. I think we, but you're not even asking for us to vote on just this informational meeting and...
In spite of your concerns, my base of inquiry...
Money. It's, we're worried about the impact. It's money. Future impact.
Sure.
Money, 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 as I'm sure you're aware, when you sit on this side of the table.
What's the population in Worthington?
Eleven fifty.
Oh.
More or less.
Yeah.
It depends on what you... The town census is about twelve fifty and the federal census is about eleven fifty and the difference is summer residents and so on. And it's been kids away, but not away in college. Town census is extended, count college kids for federal purposes to count in the dormitories.
Any questions of us?
Yeah, also, like our K six will also be like, we pay the superintendent's office. They fee you to take care of all the administrative stuff too, so it wouldn't add to...
Right. Yeah, I saw that. It's on a fee basis.
Right.
How many students in your K through six?
About the same number, probably about sixty.
Yeah. And how long a trip is it from, let's say, from Worthington where your school is to where our elementary school is?
That's the, the point is, let's see. Well, we'll still have our own elementaries.
I'm just, for my curiosity's sake, capacity questions.
Yeah. When they closed our elementary, distance-wise, obviously, Young New England is closer, Williamsburg is closer from the center of town, and West Hampton Elementary is within a couple of tenths of a mile. So, distance-wise...
Chesterfield's right near your board.
Chesterfield's right there.
Yeah, so we're the distance.
Yeah. And the high school, I've...
Depending which side of town you're in, it's closer or not.
A large part of our purpose is driven by the fact that we've had an elementary school in town since the mid seventeen hundreds. We no longer have an elementary school in town, and we wanna have an elementary school in town. We don't want our elementary school kids being bused forty-five minutes on a bus anymore.
My question was based on that, whether our school would have capacity and whether it was feasible.
Like I said, we worked out, you know, superintendent, you know, looked at all...
I mean, again, it comes down to money. As long as our share doesn't go up and there's no, doesn't look like the future would result in an increase, and it shouldn't, if you're offering based on what you're saying.
I mean, really, you're gonna get, you know, more per student anyway, you know, seventy-five hundred...
Well, and if there's a vacant seat in the building and you're paying something to occupy that seat, we're better off if you're paying something to occupy the seat.
Yeah. So, we'll get some more specific information.
But right now, the anticipation is next year.
At the earliest.
Yeah, at the earliest.
A lot of work to figure out and details to put together.
We pretty well found a plan in terms of being able to open one elementary school. So, we're pretty good about that portion already. The school was closed three years ago, and we started working...
Wasn't that a fairly new building, Tim?
Sorry?
Wasn't that a fairly new building?
Yes. In fact, that part, one of the issues involved was that the building was renovated with an MSA money. And it's the first school district in the state which has had return on school building assistance money because they caused buildings that was renovated.
Ouch.
Yeah. So, Dave is paying three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars a year for the next twelve years to pay back that debt. And we can still pay him on the original...
You guys got a lot of work to do.
You know, once the numbers come in, I don't have a problem with it.
We'll make sure you get some more specific information through time and firm plans for, firm up with superintendent.
Anytime you wanna talk to us, the door's open. Call the office and Reggie will catch you. Feel free. Nice to meet you.
Thanks for welcoming us.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Bye-bye. Hey, Billy. We're having interviews on the twenty-ninth. Is that of August? Is that, you gonna be around?
Am I gonna be around?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
It's a Thursday night?
Yes.
Extend, we wanna extend invitations to you to be here, if you may. You got better things to do, I understand.
I want you to know, but I know a few of the firefighters who were talking about coming over.
It's an open meeting, as long as it's not on payroll. I personally don't have a problem with it.
No, they won't be on payroll. I'll cancel training that night.
Okay. Any questions from the public when we have you here? No? Bob, Robert? Nothing? Okay. Reggie, you wanna have Dave come in?
Not gonna get home early tonight, am I?
No. There's a few things here. Dave, either sit there or over there, wherever you want, or stay right there. It's fine with me. I don't care. This is a continuation of a discussion on a complaint that we had July twenty-third first, was it? Was the last meeting?
That's not mine was here.
Vicki, you were asked to come. Appreciate you coming. Dave, we're here to talk about a complaint that Vicki had initiated in regards to the police chief. And Dave, we talked about that back in July, and Dave wanted to have Vicki here to be able to communicate with Vicki directly. So, that being said, Dave, you want us to continue on with the complaints?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
What?
We have an issue with complaints from Vicki in regards to the way you've talked to her on, I forget, what was the date on that?
July fifteenth.
July fifteenth, in regards to request for information, in regards to verification of an increase in stipend.
Yes.
And that's what we're at.
Okay.
And we had the discussion, you asked to have Vicki here so you could talk to her directly about it.
Well, I talked to Vicki about it that day. I don't have any further questions surrounding that. The issue that we discussed was, in my concern, was the consistent pattern of what I'll call petty harassment has been coming out of the office with documentation requests that are overbearing and unnecessary.
Well, we're not gonna talk about those. We're gonna talk about the complaint. The complaint was how you handled her on the telephone, how you talked to her. Now, did that happen or didn't it happen?
Well, you were there, Ed.
No, I was there in the room and I heard you. I told you point-blank I was there, 'cause you didn't realize I was in the room. And I did hear you.
Yeah, so...
And it happened? Do you agree with that?
I agree.
You disagreed?
We had a conversation. Did it get elevated? Probably, possibly. It was mutual conversation. If you recall, Vicki's alleged complaint here was actually an email that started off to the board with the statement of, "I thought I should let you know that you'll be getting a complaint from the police chief." So, the reality is, that wasn't a complaint. That was a precursor to reach to the board first in anticipation of a complaint that I told her I was going to make if she refused to pay the officer the EMT stipend that he's entitled to. Ultimately, the officer got paid, and I didn't need to make the complaint. During the course of that conversation, Vicki yelled at me. And as I said at a previous meeting, if you're gonna enter into a discussion about people yelling at one another, you yourself at the last meeting, Ed, started raising your voice. Mike Phelan had to caution you to tone it down.
He asked me to tone it down. But let's get back to the subject. It's not about me, Dave. It's about you. Let's get back to the point of...
Can I finish?
No. We're going back to your point about using an issue in regards to, she asked for information to support what she wanted. She had none. You, at that particular point, started to raise your voice at her. Am I yes or no?
No. That police officer...
I would suggest that you were wrong, and you yelled at me twice on the phone.
Talk everything to me. Vicki, Vicki, talk to me and the board.
Can I interject in here? Can I interject for a minute?
Yes.
This is getting ridiculous. The personalities in this building are out of control. I would not tolerate this in my office for one second. I don't think any of you are acting like grownups, to be honest with you. I think the problem here is you all have to learn how to get along and work together. And I'm not singling anybody out, whether or not people think I am or I'm not. I'm not in favor of anybody who can't pick up the phone and say, "I got a problem with what you're doing." I think you need to communicate. I've seen it between everybody in this room who's an employee of this town behaving to each other in what I find is an irresponsible or irrelevant way. I think all the sniping that goes on is ridiculous. It's ninth grade gymnasium stuff. I think you all gotta sit, turn around, say, "We're gonna work together and we're gonna get this done." This business about waiting until someone makes a mistake to complain about it instead of picking up the phone to solve the problem, rather throw a grenade into the room and see what blows up, is ridiculous. I think if the chief has a problem, he's gotta call and fix the problem. I had a discussion with the chief about documentation. Vicki, if there's something missing, you call the chief. Don't wait until the thing blows up to do something about it. This is ridiculous. I'm hearing complaints from everybody in this building about personalities.
I didn't wait till it blew up. I called him, but I didn't have the documentation and left a message with the dispatcher. He called on the phone and started yelling at me.
But my understanding...
Telling me I had no idea what I was talking about. I didn't know my job. I should get a hold of myself. The law's not black and white, and I've gone too far to ask for that documentation.
My understanding is there's always black and white, or there's something in the middle between black and white. And my understanding was that that conversation that you had with the dispatcher indicated that the officer was not going to get paid.
I was sitting in the room, and that is not what was conveyed over the phone. It said, "We needed the documentation in order to continue the payroll and pay the officer." We didn't say we were never gonna pay the officer.
No, I'm not trying to imply that you said you weren't gonna pay the officer. But the problem here is the communication between everybody. It's just ridiculous. I just wouldn't tolerate it if it was up to me. You don't, I swear to God, everybody in this building would be gone. If you can't get along, then you don't belong in here. You belong up at the elementary school, sniping with all the other people that are there, all the students. You need to get along, and you need to do it now. It can't go on. This has been building to a crescendo. We had a discussion, myself in this room with, I don't know, with some of you and the chief about payroll issues, three months ago. And maybe I fell down by not following up, but it didn't get any better. It got worse.
I guess I don't, the payroll issues at hand were about the timesheets. The timesheets are better. But I should be able to call any department head...
You should.
And ask them for documentation and not have them yell and scream at me to say, "I'm never gonna give that," or "I'm not gonna give that to you. You don't need to have that," and whatever else.
You should not get screamed at by anybody. You should not get...
I believe that's totally unacceptable.
You should not get, you should not get screamed at by anybody.
All I did was ask for some documentation.
There's, I've seen, I gotta be careful. There's been behaviors by everybody in this room. No one in this room is without guilt.
I'm talking about this one incident.
But I'm talking about, can you, put this incident aside. This incident is done. You've had, both of you have aired your complaints in public now. Now, it's time to build on that and say, "We're gonna get along. We're gonna work this out. We're gonna go forward." But I've seen incidents by everybody in this room who've been disrespectful to someone else in this room. And there have been times when I would've cut it off right there. It's time to cut it off. You guys gotta get along. You're not, no one in this room's going anywhere for the next ten or twelve years. So, you're gonna work together or you're not gonna work together. But now's the time. Everybody has to get along. I would say that we put this incident aside. It's a learning, it's a stepping stone. No one's right, no one's wrong. Let's move on and be right from here on in. Everybody got a chance to air their complaint. You got your complaint in writing. The chief came in and had his discussion with us. I'm not about to find fault with anybody, but I am gonna find fault if something doesn't get better. I don't think we need to find fault in this incident. This incident served to air the conditions in the building, which are terrible. And you people as department heads have to lead the charge to make it better. I'm set.
So, let me ask you this question. Who do you think's responsible for the information in my office? I am. I don't expect other people that work in this building to tell me what I need and what I don't need for information.
I think you have a right to ask for the information. And if you don't get the information you require, then come see someone here.
I'm just making sure that I'm responsible for the stuff in my office.
You are responsible for the stuff in the office. Nobody is saying you're not.
Okay.
I'm saying, but before it rises to the level where you two have to lock heads over, a phone call to diffuse the situation would be a lot better, or face-to-face to diffuse the situation would be a lot better than what's going on here. You know, effective management would've been to resolve this between the two of you. That would've been good management. And I'm not picking on anybody.
Dave?
I would be more than happy to see all these issues move forward, but they're only gonna move forward with constructive communication.
That's my point.
One of my issues has been the repetitive last-minute demand for documentation under an implied threat that some officer's not gonna get paid. If there's a genuine issue, I expect that it would be handled in a better manner so that the issue could be addressed properly, not on payroll day when we're fighting the clock to get payroll through.
Okay. With that being said, that means that if somebody's getting a stipend, it just doesn't happen on a Monday and put it on a Tuesday. We all know that. It's a process. Am I right? Whether it's you complete your training and stuff like that. So, we need to have an understanding that Joe Blow or John Smith is in training. When he's completing it, he's gonna be eligible for a stipend. And the proper paperwork gets executed. It should be executed ahead of time, but people should be made aware that this is coming. Would that be helpful to both you people and to everybody else?
In this particular incident, Ed, this is an officer who was getting an EMT stipend for almost two years prior to that payroll. It was never a problem before. There was five other officers on the payroll that were getting EMT stipend. That wasn't questioned. This one particular officer went into the academy during the three months he was in the academy. He did not get a stipend. When he restarted as a full-time officer, reappointed by the board for July first, it was a continuation of a stipend that he had already gotten. I have ensured as a department head that everybody is up to speed and have their appropriate certifications. My lone contention is, here we are, payroll day, it's Monday, and I'm concerned that my people aren't gonna get paid. It's just not an appropriate way to handle that.
Okay, but back it up. Shouldn't there been, granted, did you notify them when you pulled them off that stipend to go to the academy? I'm just trying to find a basis here for a better understanding how to handle this.
I don't believe that there was any notification that they weren't even got.
But what I'm saying is-
When I do the payroll, Ed, you check a box off for certain stipends. The EMT stipend per the officer's contract is rolled into their base pay. Prior to that payroll, or with that payroll, I submitted a sheet to the accountants' office that indicated what the base pay would be for that position and what the pay would be inclusive of the stipend. I signed that document validating that this officer was entitled to this rate of pay. So the information was all provided for that payroll.
Well, let me, let me add, I understand it. I understand what you're saying. You did it for that pay. But they, did they have that paperwork?
I gave it to, I submitted it to the payroll, so yes.
Are you talking like a PCF?
Yes. Yes, I have a form, as you know-
I think I saw the form.
Yeah, I have a form that I created that is specific to contracted employees. The police officers aren't under the personnel policy manual.
No, but what I'm getting to is, is the generalized budget, this affects the budget, doesn't it, don't you even have to go through policy procedures and finance committee and approve by this board to get that money in there? It's a budget.
No. I mean, I don't-
Then I can do it in law all these years.
I believe that that form, that you're-
That's your form.
The personal change form-
Right.
Which requires a signature from the personnel board and a signature from the finance committee and approval by the select board is applicable to things outside the contract. The contract trumps a personal change form that requires-
I don't know, I don't, I'm not saying I agree with you, disagree with you. I'm just saying that we have a bylaw that says everybody's included in this thing. For any change of stipend, we have to notify all these people. Number one, the finance committee knows that there's money there. And second of all, the select board knows this is happening, and then that paperwork is an approved document. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying I differ with what you're doing, but there was a procedure we have. Now, I'm under the understanding that you trump it. I was never understanding that you're trumping it.
But what I'm saying is, this guy was on the stipend before.
You are.
So he'd had his form signed already. The only thing that changed was he went from part-time to a full-time officer when we appointed him. That's the only thing that happened.
No, but he went from part-time to full-time.
Well, we signed a PCF for that. We must've signed a PCF when he went to full-time.
The select board appointed the officer initially off of a PCF when he was a part-time officer. He's already in the system. Select board also, we discussed that the officer, when he went to the police academy, would be then reappointed by the board as a student officer. Upon the successful completion of the academy, he would then be appointed by the board, the select board, as a full-time officer. So you already-
And we appointed him, not even the night we appointed him.
So the point I was trying to say before was that these people are under a contract, which is an agreement with the select board and the union. They're entitled to certain stipends and pay.
Wait back up again. Can I try to get this back?
The second time I interrupt, I'm-
Oh, I need to run to you because I wanna clarify something. The town ratifies those contracts. Not, we don't have them in there all by themselves. The town ratifies that when we go to town meeting. I just don't know how we got off of the contracts not being, going through policy procedures for any kind of check and balance.
Because the policy, that's what I'm trying to explain to you.
Well, I'm trying to get to it too. Go ahead.
I can't seem to be able to finish this sentence.
That's good, now you can start.
The Personnel Policy Board has a task as it relates to people who are under the Personnel Policy Manual. The officers are contracted through the union and the select board for certain pays and The Personal Change Form, which requires a signature from the Personnel Board and the Finance Committee, and then an approval by the Select Board, does not have authority, if you will, over the contract. The Personnel Board has no say over contract banners whatsoever. These people are under contract with the Select Board. So as a result of that, I created an informational form after discussion with Vicky and trying to work with Vicky on resolving problems previously that she had aired, or thought that there was a problem. And I created a form to try and simplify things so that she would have documentation with my signature on it validating that this individual is entitled to rate of pay changes or stipends, or whatever it may be, as an informational process. She's also been provided with a copy of the contract. So she has all the documentation provided to her that she needs to validate that this person is entitled to the stipends and the pay that they're getting. To use the Personal Change Form, which applies to people under the Personnel Policy Manual, would then cause that document to have to go before the Personnel Board. My experience has been, they often get misplaced, they don't make it to the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee sits on it, a month and a half later, he makes it to the Select Board. That's happened more times than I can count. Therefore, I created this form to simplify the matter so that Vicky would have something that she could hang on to, show the auditors or whoever else she wanted to show, that myself as the department head is verifying and signing off that this person has these rates of pay, changes, or stipends, whatever it may be. And that should settle the issue.
Just to be clarified though, I passed on to you that I contacted Town Attorney. In her position as Town, she has the right to ask for any documentation to verify numbers that she wants. And I just wanna be clear in this room that if she asks for verification, she's entitled, she's to get it, because that's, Town Attorney said that's her charge. I don't, and I don't necessarily agree with doing it on the day of payroll, that's a different issue. But she has the right to ask for the documentation.
My concern on that, Mike, is just that. It seems to always happen on the day of payroll being done. My second concern on that is that it's simulating out the police department for the request for a stipend. There's other officers that also were getting that same stipend. The point that I made at our last meeting was that if Vicky wants to have, to revalidate in her new position, she's been here several months, if she doesn't believe the department heads or doesn't like the fact that the people have already been being paid these things, then what the proper way to handle it is to do a blanket policy notification, talk to the Select Board, however, notify everybody and say, "Look, the accountants' office is requesting all copies or validations or certifications as they relate to stipends or hourly increases, or whatever it may be. Do that equitably with every department in the town, not just picking out one single officer and complete payroll on payroll day."
How often do you have to ask Vicky for extra paperwork from somebody on payroll day?
Me?
Yeah. Like, how often does something, like, how often do you have to call-
It'll show up when certain situations, like in this particular instance, and, you know, and I explained this to the chief, that change form that he did with all that documentation and signature was great, that gave me other information, but there was a new slip in there that said he would be getting paid an extra dollar because he earned his EMT certification. I knew that the day that he turned in his payroll. So I called and said, "Hey, can I have proof that he actually has his certification?" I don't know that. I'm not, I'm not saying that the chief doesn't approve that he has it, but I do know that. Someone's gonna come to me and say, "Oh, we're paying this guy this extra dollar." And he don't have proof that he actually has it.
But do you have to call different departments regularly?
It all depends on what comes in.
I don't agree with that.
Is there a reason that we don't have a blanket format?
I did not have, no, no. I guess for future, I have to go around to doing that, asking for that particular type of information so we know what step people are at and what level we're at. The auditors actually asked for that. This was something that came up, you know, if the fire chief had said, you know, "This guy's getting a new license," or, you know, "Donna passed some classes and needed to get a new," you know, "She would get paid a stipend." I would need proof that she actually has that.
So maybe a great resolution to this would be to come up with that kind of, what you just said, and so that you have it, right? And then who-
I can do that, I, you know?
Well, this is actually, pardon me, this is actually-
I got a question. Billy?
You know, I've only been a department head for fourteen months, and if you follow the rules, do what's asked of you, you have no problem. I use the same form. I have been having a great turnover at that fire department. I have gotten rid of a lot of firemen, I have hired firemen, I've promoted them, and I've had no problems. Why? 'Cause the town has a form. I follow it, I follow the procedure, I've never had a problem. I show the documentation, if I say a guy gets a buck now because he's an EMT, the documentation's there. If I hire a guy and I say he's an EMTI, which is an intermediate, he gets another dollar, it's there. I have never had a payroll issue. I don't know what the problem is. I agree with you about, there's a lot of problems here in this town hall. If people weren't stuck on their old mill sector and not wanna give in, we're gonna continue to have this problem. Like I said, I'm brand new, I came and became a department head, and I have had no problem over this town hall, whether it be with Vicky, whether it be with Donald, whether it be with Joyce. Why? Because I don't mind being, you follow the rules. If somebody tells me, "Hey, you gotta do this," okay. You know, it's give and take. And if you dig your feet in, where, "I'm lost, I've been here longer, I'm not doing that," we're gonna have problems.
You know, I'd like to just respond to that. That's wonderful, Bill, who's been here for fourteen months and has had no trouble. I've been the chief for almost fifteen years, and I've had a number of problems, where bills haven't been paid, no notifications, a lack of communication, coming out of the accountants' office, refusals to pay bills, refusals to reimburse officers. There have been a whole slew of problems, some of the things that we thought might get that meeting we had a few months ago. And not to rehash all those issues again right now, but it's wonderful that Bill's had an excellent experience. I haven't been that lucky. It's not about not bending, it's about doing things properly.
Well, I, I-
Go ahead.
I have an issue with what you just said, because we've all made mistakes. I've made mistakes, I made a lot of mistakes, but I kinda learned from them. And I'm not stepping on what Billy said, but yeah, he's been here only fourteen months, and he is a new guy, and he wants to do the things right, and I didn't wanna do the right thing. You don't need to do this anymore than the next guy. But, you know, I have, I'm gonna hang up on this form that you're talking about. You know, I don't know where, you say you're exempt from the form because they're union. On the top of the policy procedures book, it says, "This is for all town employees, with the exception of the school department and a contract individual." Okay? Now, I don't know why you don't think the finance committee should sign off on that because they check the finances, that's their job, and the selectmen shouldn't be aware that these stipends are coming through. I think we should be. And that's my own comment. And I don't know why it's so difficult to use that form, because the timeframe? I don't know.
You are intimately familiar with two of us served on the Personnel Board-
That's right.
That very often, PCS would never make it to the Select Board. They would get waylaid somewhere along the way. Many times, finance committee member took them to their workplace, they had them in their briefcase. Sometimes I went six weeks with a Personnel Change Form amongst the missing and had to reproduce a new Personnel Change Form.
And that has happened to me too. Okay? Well, it's not just the point, but the point is, what I'm trying to say, there is a form, and people are supposed to be made aware of what's going on. The finance committee needs to know that there's money there to cover this, so, and the selectman needs to-
The policy has already been established.
Well, things, when it doesn't match up, or we're looking for shortfalls that we anticipate, they need to know.
And as I stated, this case-
They need to know. And this board, this board needs to know too.
Here's a suggestion. I, just for simplicity's sake, Chief, I would ask that you go back to the PCF form. But I don't know that the PCF form would've stopped this problem from developing, because if the PCF form carries the same information that your form does, and my understanding, Vicky wasn't looking for signatures on the PCF form, she was looking for some other verification, from what I've heard earlier. But I think Ed's probably right that we go back to the PCF form for the police officers. And I apologize, but I think that's necessary. But I don't think the PCF would've stopped this complaint from happening because the information the chief is saying is on the form that he gave her. The issue becomes that the form went over, she went looking for, she asked for verification, and a clash occurred. Let's bury the clash, let's resolve it, and let's say, "Let's do this right from here on in, and let's get along, and let's not do it on the day, let's not do it on the day of the payroll." Let's, and know that she's entitled to whatever she asked for, so if she, she wants my charge slip for lunch, then she gets it. I don't have, I can't argue with you, that's the law. She gets the verification that she requests. But Vicky, I'm gonna ask you not to do it, I personally, not the Select Board, there's been no motion made. I would ask that from now on, you try to do it a little bit ahead and give some heads up that, "I'm gonna change, I'm gonna ask for some additional information from now on," or whatever it is, but let's try to avoid these clashes, because if you people set the example in here, it's all the hell. If two department heads can't get along, how do you expect other people in this building to get along? You know, we have, there's a lot of petty issues floating around, and they all need to go away. And that, I don't wanna resolve, I don't wanna come to a, I would ask Vicky to withdraw her complaint against the chief from a formal adjudication, and let's move on that this is gonna be better from here on in.
Can I, excuse me. I had given the board maybe two, three, two weeks ago, policy, it's been a while, a policy on establishment and adoption of policies. I know it sounds kinda twisted, but what it basically does is, when you wanna change something, any department, you notify the other departments, the Select Board first, and we discuss it and have fourteen days to hash it out and get it into the bylaw, or make it a rule, before we just say, "Okay, today I want, you know, this or that to happen." And we kinda weigh the departments, and they have some feedback before that policy is put into effect. For every department, so then there wouldn't be arguing, because we'd have some parameters and some rules to follow, and if those rules weren't followed, then we can deal with them, rather than everybody talking about and, I just, I can't believe it, I've been here two and a half years, and I, what I've heard has been really stressful.
But that being said, Jackie-
No, I'm gonna, I-
You're taking the revision.
Excuse me, sir, I didn't interrupt you, please let me finish. I'm almost done, a few minutes, okay?
You got a few minutes.
Thank you.
Go.
Thank you. I just want people to get along. I mean, I know we're supposed to be civil servants. We're here to serve the public, we should stop arguing. If there's a problem, then come to the board and let's talk about it before it gets nasty, and let's go back to our bylaws and discuss them before we start talking about each other. It's terrible. I just, you know, I have a year left, and if I, if this continues, I'm not gonna be able to do my job. I am a public servant. I'm trying to help the community, help the community, not listen to people fighting all the time. This is terrible.
Anybody else?
Yes, I just have one thing I'd like to say. It's my responsibility as a department head to look out for my employees and ensure that they're getting paid. The basic problem here, as I see it, is that there's been a pattern of last-minute demands for documentation, in most cases of things that, in all cases so far, of things that have already been in place. And I think that, as I suggested earlier, a request in advance for all these things if Vicky wants them, do it. But, you know, I'm in a position on payroll day to look out for my people, and when there are implied threats that people aren't gonna get paid, it concerns me greatly. These people work hard for the town, and they deserve to be paid when they're supposed to be paid.
I don't doubt you, I don't disagree with you. I think we need to talk about these plans coming forward in a timely manner so people are aware of them. That's all I'm trying to say. And I think that we need to do a better job as Board of Selectmen to make sure our department heads do that without getting to the point where we are right now. I think that Jackie had some good concerns. We have problems, we have procedures in place, we're just not using them. We need to go back and start using them if there's some changes to be made, and I'll be the first to tell you, I served on that board for eighteen years, policy procedures, and I know it needs, it needs work. And you served on it, Mike served on it. It needs work, but it has worked. In many cases, it has worked. There are changes to be made, you know? There's several changes already in the document that we need to have hearings on. We just haven't been able to get to them. And there has been talk about having department head meetings and communication meetings. I'll be the first one to go to meetings. I went to meetings before. I think you can air things out, as long as people wanna have a sincere effort to look at these problems and say, "Yeah, it's not just me, I'm not throwing anybody else under the bus, yeah, I have some problems too." You know, you gotta be willing to say, "I can take some criticism and look at it and say, 'We need to do better. I need to do better.'" And maybe we can communicate this better in the future at various board meetings. I know the board has talked about having department head meetings to have this conversation, and an open forum to improve. We haven't set a date, but hopefully it'll be well-attended, and people can put the information out there with the understanding that we're gonna do better. Because, as we heard tonight, some things got out of hand, and it needs to be resolved in a much better atmosphere. Mike had entertained something with you, Vicky. I don't know if you're interested in that, that is, I don't know what you wanna do with that. No?
Because it wasn't the first time. And since I started working here a year ago, every time the chief hands something in, my office walks on eggshells. Who's turn is it to call to get yelled at? How do we explain that, you know, something was wrong with payroll? Which, it wasn't a fault of anyone, people make mistakes, things happen, you know, things don't add up.
Okay. That's history. That's history, okay? What I'm saying is, I think the board as a whole wants to change this. We want to open this up to find out why and improve upon it, and try not to have it happen again. I don't know if it's gonna work, but it's a tool that we can try. And communication by all departments-
I would agree.
-is the beginning. Do you think that's a doable situation, Dave?
I've said all along that we need to move forward and have better communication, and this has been a multi-year problem with some things coming out of that office. I looked forward for a long time when Vicky first came here.
Okay, but- Okay, but we're, we're trying to put it behind us-
Absolutely. When Vicki first came here, I looked forward to making improvements in, in the, the town's office and, and having a much better relationship than what happened before Vicki came here. But in some cases, it still continued. There was two, an officer who was completely omitted after the payroll, two payrolls ago, despite all the efforts and that have been made to ensure that people don't, uh, you know, not get paid what they're supposed to get paid.
But he was, I caught that before the checks were handed out, and the check was handed out at the same time he picked up the other checks.
You contacted him, I brought it to your attention, Donna.
Well-
I brought it to your attention over the disparity of-
But we said that people make mistakes. We caught it, it was resolved immediately.
I caught, and I don't wanna get into semantics on it, but it was missed by both officers.
We need to bring this to a conclusion. I, I don't mean to shut you off, Dave, but, um, we want the past to be the past, and we need to learn from it, and let's, let's build a new foundation.
My point was, it's not gonna get any better than it's getting right now-
Thank you.
...today at the meeting, and I'd like to see you go to the next point of the agenda.
I'm gonna move that we take Vicki's complaint and file it, taking no action on it.
Do a second.
Second.
Anybody else? I mean, uh, let's have a vote on that.
I should be doing it by roll call.
Please?
Molt and I. It's yours, I.
Deal and I.
Colly, I. With that being said, the next, next thing on the agenda is...
Can we have a water break?
Be like this, five-minute water break. Okay, we're back in session. Um, next thing on the agenda is the personal policy board. Uh, they, uh, they received the notice?
They did.
And, did you get a response?
I believe I, I got a response, but they didn't confirm or deny.
Okay, Mike, last week we have a, an issue with a part-time individual.
I saw that.
And there's a, um, it seems like there's two different conflicting things in the policy procedures book. Um, so could you, when you meet the finance, uh, policy procedures board, would you try to get an interpretation, or, um, if we need to get a legal counsel as far as to take care of two different opinions?
Do they have a lineup schedule? Do they have any?
I think they meet once a month, don't they?
I've heard out of, out of the loop.
I think they met last week, but it was canceled, that's all I know.
Cause I thought, I thought I saw-
I think it's coming up this week, but I'm not sure. Oh, it's not this week, cause one of them's on vacation, right?
And I'll be away again.
I don't, yeah, I brought all the water.
Well, you check and see if we can get a, a remedy to that. We did pay her.
Yeah, she's been paid the personal, and she's been paid the vacation.
Okay, but we need to-
Yeah, cause it's always been my assumption that under twenty, we always went into the assumption under twenty hours it was part-time and did not get better.
Yeah, but then there's another area that spells it out that it's prorated, so, I mean, there is a conflict there.
It's not.
Okay? And Reggie brought that to my attention.
So, once the personnel board reports back of the clarification, they're gonna meet with you, is that the plan?
Well, they should be, at least-
Yeah.
Bring it to Mike, and Mike should bring it to us as a liaison.
Okay, and then, whatever that resolution is, if moving forward, do we notify other employees?
We'll have to notify them all.
Okay.
Just communication. Uh, now, we need to go into executive session one more time in regards to bringing Michael up to snuff as far as the town administrator's contract. Um, so at this particular time, we're, I don't think we're gonna go back into session, unless you wanna hold this, if there's anything else that you wanna talk about. There's one thing I wanna talk about.
There is a permit that I saw on, on the agenda.
Yes. Permit for the log cabin.
Yeah.
One-day liquor license.
Yes.
And we have some PCS in here.
We have a one-day alcohol license permit for the log cabin banquet house, beer and wine, date of event eight thirty-one thirteen, from five to eleven P.M. at the Black Birch Vineyard, serving vineyard wine and beer.
The vineyard already has a liquor license to sell.
What's LC for, oh, log cabin providing beer.
Yep.
Anticipated number of attendees, sixty. Bartender is named, been an employee since two thousand and nine, certified, yes, everything seems appropriate. We have-
The whole harmless.
The whole, the license permit, the whole harmless. And I would, I wanna think what this is. Oh, this must, uh, this must be... Oh, it's a wedding reception.
Yes.
Okay, it's a wedding.
Private function.
So it's a private function. Move to sign the license.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
I have a question on, uh, the board on liquor licenses. As you're calling back in June, um, we had a request from Harley Shop and Red Canyon or wherever you're calling now. Um, and subsequently to that, the board consulted Tom Council to find out and get some, um, advice on establishing the proper rules for that. Um, and I had asked an email be sent to the board, I think sometime in July, just to find out if there's any further follow-up on that. It's my feeling that the board should look into establishing some criteria in the policy for these one-day liquor licenses for the future, you know? If you recall from Tom Council's advice, um, there were certain parameters that had to be set up, um, under state law. But, um, my feeling is that the, if the board were to adopt a policy itself so that these things can be addressed, you know, in a more educated manner in the future, I think it would be a lot more beneficial for the town. Has there been any further?
No, and as far as I'm aware, we haven't talked about it, except, uh, that particular issue, I think, was bringing it to a head and disappeared, if you remember. But, yeah, it's still out there, and it still can happen. Um, this particular one is a private wedding of sixty people, um, and an establishment that already has an approved wine, wine license, but I believe the caterer wants to bring in beer to, to augment that, which, um, he went through the proper channels to do it. But I, I have a tendency to agree with you on that, because we could eliminate, uh, maybe a party like this where there's a hundred, there's a tenant, somebody's backyard with a hundred people, fine, as long as you're responsible for it, but something like the Harley Shop where these are all outsiders coming in, and it was a different animal, but actually it's the same type of permit.
About a month or so ago, maybe four or six weeks ago, the Harley Shop actually was looking for a one-day license for an event. You know, they wanted to hire two officers to, um, do security at the-
That wasn't the same one we, we were dealing with.
That wasn't the original one, this was a subsequent one after that.
Cause we had talked about having them do two officers, when we were bantering around, we said, "One for crowd control, one for traffic."
Right.
What, what if we requested the chief to get, submit a-
I recommended not to issue that license-
No.
...because of liability to the town on that.
And we did.
The board did not, uh, issue that license. And that's why I bring it up again, because I don't believe anything further-
Well, you know, we did, I mean-
...to take a closer look at the policy.
We did spend some serious money researching that with, uh, I think Joe Fair and Patrice Cantor, and I think the work's already been done.
Right.
And, and another follow-up, um, with them-
Thanks.
-to bring some parameters and some guidelines, I think, uh, considering what we've already spent, probably it's not gonna be that much more, so.
With, with what he just said, I think it's a good idea that we see if we can have David work with them.
Right, I was gonna suggest that he, from a public safety point of view, you, you draft what you think would be, or suggest what you think would be correct, and, you know, especially for you, for public safety.
I mean, I don't wanna reinvent the wheel, but I think it was Joe Fair that did a lot of this work.
Yeah, but as you said, most of it's all done. I, I just think, you know, I would just like to see the board adopt a formal policy so that when these occur, like, we may not have another one until next June.
Right.
And then we may have these select board members on, and we'll have something to go through and say, "This is how this should be handled."
Well, one thing I would like to see, and that shouldn't come to the board until it has, like, your signature on it, and fire chief's signature on it, saying that, "They're fine." And then, it means that we're not calling them in for another week to look at it.
Right.
They, you have to, you know-
Start with you guys.
There's another community, um, South Hally has a great policy and a great form, and I would like to replicate it, and that's what they do, they contact police and fire prior to hand, going to the select board.
Why don't you bring it in and show it to-
Okay.
And one of the other things that you brought up, Mike, was, at that time we were dealing with the June issue, was that, you know, you have fourteen days from the, I think fourteen days from the date of application in which we responded, and the application was actually coming in a few days before the event. So, um, you know, I think we're beneficial to do that, but yeah, I'd like to see that.
Okay, I'll send it to you. Now, I have one more, just to, before you guys go into executive. So, on the twenty-seventh, you're gonna do the, the interviews, Ed's gonna contact the folks-
Twenty-ninth.
Oh, twenty-ninth, excuse me, twenty-ninth.
Are we meeting on the twenty-seventh?
No, you're not, that's off night, Dave and McDougal said he won't be here. Um, I scheduled Charlie Kinnicky on, just for five minutes, to give you a quick update on the public safety complex, where we're at, if that's okay.
Is that the twenty ninth, the Thursday before Labor Day?
Yep.
I'm gonna get in trouble.
I know, you're day off. Won't go run you five miles that day in a cemetery.
I just took Fri-, Friday off.
Well, you can go Friday, it's a day.
I know, but I was planning on leaving on Thursday night.
Well, you can when we get out of here.
I can follow you, cause I'm gonna drive this much.
At this particular time, do we decide on the time?
I think you said six-thirty, seven, seven-thirty.
Do you wanna move it up? Well, you got a commitment with the school, am I right?
I'm done, I served lunch.
One o'clock in the afternoon?
No, 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 no.
Four. Four-thirty. Five.
Four-thirty, five.
And remember, if you do that, most of the fire guys have full-time jobs that may wanna come here till five or six o'clock.
If I'm not available, do you have a quorum?
Yes.
Okay. If I, I, because I just made a commitment-
Oh, yeah, Dave will-
-at four o'clock this afternoon to-
Yeah.
-take the day off and the evening off, and-
McDougal was supposed to be here too, so I guess we can give you dispensation.
I, hopefully she's not watching.
She is.
So, and then, the last one, sorry.
Go ahead.
The last one is your job description.
Well, I was gonna bring that up.
Okay.
I'm, I want you to go home with some homework and look at the job description, be prepared. Uh, next time we meet in session, we go over, if you're in agreement with the job description, what you wanna change, we need to change it, and we need to post it out there. And, um, Reggie did a, a brief timeline, uh, and it's still a tough timeline, we're probably, on the best-case scenario, it's not gonna make it, but we gotta start. Okay? So, um, I would say that first meeting in September?
September sixth.
Sixth, be ready to cut anything out of there, you wanna cut out or add things that we've been doing, and I'd like to see us post that, and start getting the applicates in here, and get a screen committee established. You guys in agreement with that?
I'd suggest we use a screen committee.
Well, I mean, no offense, but there's nobody with construction background.
Well, I know.
You know, you need some construction background, and, um, Jim approached me, he would be happy to serve on it. Um, I can't talk to the other people, Jim won't.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Um, I'd like to see people with some construction background, or even public works background, or either another department head who knows somewhat of what's involved.
If we could have the non-professionals, some of them at least stay on, cause that, that format was great, I mean-
There were seven of them.
That, that, uh, report was easy to follow, easy to read, and easy to understand.
Okay.
But, excuse me, but you have reviewed it, and you are happy with everything.
Reggie did a ver-, a version, and, which was based on an old version-
Times is-
-based on another version of Diane Schindler's version, and I took her version and tweaked it, and changed it, and that's what's in front of you.
But it's job description you're talking about.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so you think the job description is?
I think it's fairly good, but I, I want you guys to look at it, and make some changes, if you need be. Um, with that being said, maybe we could ask Reggie to start forming a committee, and put notices out there looking for people to be understood.
I think we should do that anyway, I moved that we started assembling a committee to, um-
I'll just post the vacancy, and then you'll vote for the charge.
We still haven't given you a letter yet.
I said that.
Okay. Uh, question?
Are you going into executive session?
Uh, in a minute, go ahead.
I got two things for you to, uh-
Yep.
Um, one of the things is, I went down a list of your agenda, and I noticed fire chief status update for whatever that was on there, so I thought I'd give you my update of where I am at this point.
Crippled.
I'm crippled, yeah. Tom's still gonna, uh, take care of my shoulder, my arm, whatever, the knee I'll deal with. Um, the board asked me to stay on until the end of August, I'm doing that, my retirement date's the thirty-first, my last day of work is the twenty-seventh, I'll be on three days' vacation. Uh, I've made some promotions over there, the board kind of suggested that we move up to the point of having two deputies, which we now have within the fire department. There's a fire deputy, an EMS deputy, uh, and the fire deputy will be back, and he should be in charge when I'm gone. He's run a department before, he has all my passwords for the computer, he's up on payroll, warrants, so he should be in good hands till whenever.
My recommendation, uh, just my, would you bring him over and meet the chief and the dispatchers, make sure they're all, um, that he's-
My recommendation, um, just my, would you bring him over and meet the chief and the dispatchers, make sure they're all, um, that he's aware of who the people are?
Yes, and when would you be picking where we do chief?
We would like to do it sooner than later, but, you know, I'm just telling you, the little thumbs doesn't really fall in.
Right.
You know.
Like I said before.
We're meeting on the twenty-ninth. It's not gonna happen that fast.
Right.
And, you know, he's gonna, um, or she has to give up, uh, you know, a proper notice too, so it'll probably be three or four weeks after.
Like I said before, I have to cut the ties with the town for four weeks to six weeks. More than happy to come in if the new chief wants my help. I'm more than happy to sit down with them, um, tell them everything I know, what I know it may be. Uh, take them around, show them stuff.
I do believe that you need to have a transition into, you know, into the computers and.
Right.
And the proper word is, and, you know, fill in the blanks and.
And that's what I've been doing over there. I've got a, a paper that I will actually give them, and actually it's the same one that my deputy uses and has a list of all my passwords to get into every program over there, so.
Is it secure?
Yes.
Until we've had issues before?
No, no, it's secure.
Well, and we, and I don't, is chief aware that the two deputy chiefs that were here, I've offered their time and for incident, their expertise for incident management if we needed in the interim?
Yeah, the deputy chief, Shay, was it?
O'Shea.
O'Shea from Springfield, and the deputy chief from Westfield lives over there. They both offered their services as an inform while you're gone, if they need it.
If, you know, with incident command, not, not to step on anybody's toes, but just if, if they were needed, cause you were gone and.
And we work real close with Chief Mauder out of East Hampton, and I'm sure he'd be more willing to come over and assist as well as, uh, any of the chiefs in your organizations that I belong to, so.
Maybe, maybe the, your two deputy chiefs should meet those two deputy chiefs just in case.
One of them already knows one of them, so.
And the gentleman that's in charge EMS, he's from Westfield?
Yes.
Okay.
Somebody knows that deputy personally, works with him.
Uh, I have a letter here from Bill addressed to the select board. I reference the fire chief. "In July meeting, you asked me to stay on till the end of August. I am letting you know that I have done this and will be retiring on August thirty-first. My last day of work will be August twenty-seventh, and the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirty, thirtieth, I will be on vacation. Deputy, uh, Facoli will be back from vacation and will take over the department unless the board wishes to change that decision. I thank you and the town, I thank you and the town for letting me spend thirty-plus years working for the many departments within the town. We can be a leader. I do appreciate your support."
I'm gonna accept the last, the letter and to extend our congratulations and our condolences.
And, uh, one thing I can say is I really appreciate you coming in and helping us out when we needed it.
You're welcome. You don't have to stand. You can sit. I got more. Just a real quick update on the paramedic level. We're real close. Uh, some of the license forms have been sent in. Uh, I did buy a one-use monitor. Uh, one of our ambulances has a brand-new stretcher in it. Uh, and West Hampton has given us to use their brand-new monitor. It was okay through their fire chief and their select board for us to use. It's like a fifty thousand dollar monitor. They said use it until you can get a new one.
Question I have at that point, not to shut you off.
Yeah.
I've been known to shut people off.
Yeah.
Um, the question I have is, when you become paramedic, you need a, an information, go to the fire department because they are dispatching EMS personnel, am I right?
Yes.
So, they need to know that, so they're not sending in East Hampton or Westfield or whatever.
Right. When we first started off as paramedic, we're gonna be doing forty-five hours a week, Monday through Fridays, how we're gonna start. Uh, at that point, I would think when they became mine at eight o'clock, they'll call dispatch and say, we are at a paramedic level. Cause you're right, dispatch will have to.
You need to have that communication.
Right.
When is that, when is it effective?
I just had a meeting with the hospital and it should be like three weeks, four weeks, I'm hoping.
My question is that fifty thousand dollar unit from West Hampton, we better make sure that's on some, somebody's insurance covering.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Because whether it's ours, theirs, or both.
Right.
Um, somebody drops that or we get in an accident with that ambulance.
Can we get a rider?
Well, we should, we should make sure that, since it's a formal department, it's not ours.
Right. I mean, would you check with East, uh, with West Hampton?
Sure.
And if not, we should just do it because.
Right.
We should, we should.
Check with our agent and tell them we've just taken this piece of equipment and it's not ours. It's, it's a non-owned piece of valuable equipment that we need it covered.
Right.
Yep.
Cost of it is anywhere forty, fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, that being said, uh, there are grants coming out in September. Uh, I forget the grant rider, but there is a grant rider out there who's been real good at writing grants. I could almost guarantee us getting two of those through a grant, but he'd take a percentage of the grant. So, at that time, the town would have to come up with some money for that.
Well, we'll see.
For right now, we should be offset. There should be enough money to cover the other needs of the paramedics on the equipment. I've got one more thing. I just keep on, I'll be before I'll talk on that. West Hampton is gonna be sending one of their fire trucks out to have a foam system put on it. Uh, the chief that brought over the monitor and that's okayed us to use it has asked if we have a engine that they could use in the meantime. Uh, they're looking at a duration of probably four weeks, somewhere in that area, to send their truck out, have a foam system on it, and get it back. Excuse me, I think they said they had one other truck, uh, so they'd be down a pumper. I told them we did. We do have an engine one over there that is our main brush truck. It's a rear backup pumper.
Four by four?
Yes, it's a four-wheel drive International, nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, I told them I'd be more than happy to let them use that one for the month. But then again, that has to come out through the select board also, cause it's the town's equipment, not mine. Um, they would use it, they would house it. If we needed it, we'd call, they'd bring it right down.
I'll have a question regarding that. The fire hoses on that truck, are they old? I'm afraid they're gonna burst on them and we'll be responsible.
Well, getting back to the fire hose again, I went for that in the budget, denied it, since then did more looking. The town has to come up with money. Most of the fire hose over there is outdated by NFPA standards, which means if it blows apart, somebody gets hurt, we're in a world of not good standings.
Right.
That being said, I brought all these sc- or most all the scop packs up. They've been like four or five years behind time. Uh, the, I have just set up for our three pumps to go out and get the pumps certified, something that needs to be done every year. I can never remember, and I've been in that department twenty-three years, our pumps ever being certified. But that will happen August thirtieth. Those three trucks will have those pumps certified.
Come here, right?
We're gonna be shipping them out. There's a company going to West Hampton. It's right up to regional. We're just gonna go right there with them.
Well, the issue, the first issue we need to deal with is the truck to give it to, to West Hampton.
Right.
And I think, you know, I, I would move that we allow them to use the, the truck with the understanding that they know the hoses are out of date. When you deliver the truck, you deliver the message. They may have hoses that they can put on it.
Right, because what they'll be doing is stripping one of their trucks, uh, to send it out, so they could do that.
And maybe the suggestion would be that we'd send it with no hoses. If you think the hoses are not proper, then we should send it with our hoses and let them.
All I'm saying is according to the standards, they're outdated.
But do you think they're dangerous?
I have no idea. I'm not a piece of hose. I don't know what it's.
Yeah, then, then I suggest we send them the truck, but not the hoses.
Well, I, I wouldn't send, send the truck. We are understanding, let them know that the hoses are, uh, they're not certified.
We have pressure tested. We've got our own pressure testers. We've done the hoses, but the fact is that you can pressure test it.
Yeah, you do.
But the date on the hose says it's too old to be in service and needs to be replaced, whether it.
But, but we've pressure tested them recently and, and they held.
Uh, within the last, I think, two years, we did it wrong, so.
Should they sign something, a disclaimer, to protect themselves?
Well, they asked for it. Um, my feeling is they, uh, should be put on notice that, you know, the hoses are not meeting a certain standard, but, um, it's not like West, West Hampton has a lot of hydrants up there.
No, that's true.
No, they've only got like two or three.
So, if you, you know, I, maybe the suggestion would be that we give them the truck with a letter from the chief that just clearly states that the hoses are out of date.
Okay.
And then. And they should give us a whole harmless, huh?
Okay.
I'll make that a motion.
Second? Who have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The truck father won't be going out till, um, after I'm gone. I think they're looking at sending hers out the middle of the first week of September or something.
No, is Chris Norris still the chief up there?
Yes, he is. So, I'll just call him tomorrow and advise him all this and let him know that it's.
Let him know there's, uh, that you're changing, uh, your mode from active to retirement.
He knows.
I'm sure.
Thank you, chief.
Uh, I have a letter here that we need to send out to Melonson and Heath in regards to procedures. Um, Reggie has reviewed it and put it together in our stationary. I believe there was one item you had a concern with on this?
Yeah, number nine and ten, it's highlighted in bold.
Um, it's just more of the plate that, uh, we're happy with their services and something that has been in your file.
Oh, this is the auditors?
Yes. Is this something we need right away? Can we review it for a week? Or are we in trouble?
Um, I think we can do it. I believe she sent everything to Donna for the, for the Moody's, so.
Oh, we can wait on this?
I think so.
Can we get that somehow emailed to us so that we could?
I believe, I think I did.
I thought you did. I thought I read that before.
Oh, man, I went through so many.
I'm sorry.
No, I mean.
I'm keeping it.
Getting to be my least favorite person to see.
We'll do it, uh, we'll do it. We're not meeting twenty-seven, Thursday, yeah. Okay? Is that all right? She emails to you and then we'll, we'll pass it out Thursday?
So.
Um, we, after the meeting, we're gonna come on executive session, the subcommittee for the building, which is you and me, the change orders, uh, just to let you know, the bench gone. We're not doing anything with its history. We're not even putting the blocking up there. Uh, Steadco is, uh, is the manufacturer of the dome where it's near. Um, says it's fine the way it is. It's not gonna impede that, that dome over the foyer there and that, uh, they have enough money if they find anything rotted with that, um, blocking that's currently there. There's a, there's a, they have two hundred feet of wood that's been allocated for replacement. They haven't used it yet, so they're gonna use that. So, that change order is disappeared. What we have for change orders is we took the first one with the two ends of the main classrooms where they're going to change some blocking underneath the, uh, the sheet rock. They broke that out as a separate change order one, and then they, the slashing is another change order, uh, which was, when we approved it, was one change order, but they broke it into two. Then the third change order I have here is that electric post has to be put in for two thousand. So, so far, and we're, we're, we're coming down on the project, we only have about six thousand dollars of the change orders versus twenty-five. So, that's worked out very good.
We budgeted for twenty-five?
No, we budgeted for, there's always a contingency, but we're not using it. We're, we're under it.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, when we come on a session, Mike and I will sign those. Okay? Uh, I need a roll call vote to go into executive session and match general laws. Chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, we are talking about number eight again.
Number two.
Number two?
Contract, no, you need contract.